Good morning and welcome to the Board of Supervisors, Tuesday, June 14, 2022. If we could please stand for the badge.
I come to the wish to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a report out from the six seven closed session, and at this time, I'll turn it over to the clerk.
Item one pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel, re-anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation, board action, reportable, no reportable action taken. Item three pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with county-designated labor negotiators Krista Von Latta and Judy Hawkins regarding the following employee organizations: Service Employees International Union, SEIU, Local 1021, Sheriff's Management Unit, SMU, Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association, CCPSEA, Deputy Sheriff's Association, DSA, Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union, Unrepresented Employees, board action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you. At this time, we will go to staff announcements, and I believe we have Ms. Medina and Bowler. Are they online? Okay.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Member, CEO Von Latta, County Counsel and Deputy Clerk of the Board, Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. The Focus Animal Service Vaccine Clinic was successful this past Saturday with over 153 rabies vaccines given and 53 microchips. Thanks again to Doctors Kathy and Steve Gatlin for their support and always being available for our clinics. A very special thank you to all of the Focus members who devote so much of their time to helping us create a better environment for our animals at the shelter. We are also grateful for the person that is responsible for developing the rabies vaccine during the late 19th century, Louis Pasteur. He was born December 27, 1822. He was a French chemist and microbiologist who was one of the most important founders of microbiology. Pasteur's contributions to science, technology, and medicine are nearly without precedent. He pioneered the study of molecular biology, discovered that microorganisms cause fermentation and disease, and originated the process of pasteurization. He saved the beer and wine and the silk industries of France and developed vaccines for anthrax and most of all and the best of all, rabies. Our next clinic is in September, and it's scheduled in Angels Camp at Spence Feets Clinic. This will be a rabies vaccine clinic only. We wish everybody a wonderful summer and hope to see you soon. We have so many wonderful, loving animals on our shelter, so please come and see us. Thank you.
Hi, Jessie.
Good morning. Morning, Madam Chair, Honorable Members of the Board, Jessica Fowler, Agricultural Commissioner. I'm here to tell you about the Calaveras Department of Agriculture, who in partnership with Amador, Yolo, San Joaquin, Sacramento Counties, is planning to host an agricultural pesticide collection and disposal event in Lodi later this year. This event is specifically for agricultural use, including unwanted or legacy pesticides from growers who farm in the participating counties. Prior to the event, we need to gather information to determine an accurate cost estimate and a bid from a hazardous materials disposal company. This event will be partially funded by our sister counties and partially funded through a California Department of Pesticide Regulation grant. There will be no cost to registered growers who participate or Calaveras County. I would like to let our growers know this is an amnesty event and no regulatory action will be pursued because of your participation or pesticides to be disposed of. If you would like to participate in this event, please pre-register by completing an online questionnaire via link through Calaveras County's Department of Agriculture's news and information webpage, and this registration, it will close on June 30. So you have two weeks, and if you prefer to do a hard copy version of the questionnaire, you can go ahead and call our department at 209-754-6504. And can I answer any questions for you? Otherwise, that was it.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Caroline. I'm not clear about when we use the word amnesty, that sort of sets up a red flag for the growers or farmers, whatever the proper term is these days. What would entice them to want to go? I mean, you know, is it information? I mean, but then we say it's, you have to register, put your name down, and it's an amnesty program. It doesn't sound very welcoming. Thank you.
Right. Oh, yeah, absolutely. So to answer that, what this is, is something that we've actually been working towards of the different commissioners. It's to find funding for it to be free, because a lot of growers, ranchers, farmers, whatever term you'd like to use, have agricultural-use pesticides for whatever reason, maybe they're not, no longer registered, or they don't want to use them anymore, and it's quite expensive to actually pay to get rid of these materials, so they just sit in their storage area and they pile up. Obviously, they can degrade over time and lead to further problems. So we've been looking for funding to allow these growers to be able to get rid of these materials free of cost to them, but in order to do so, because they are hazardous materials, we need to know what they are and in what quantity, because they have to be properly packed and then shipped to hazardous waste facilities. So that is why we have to pre-register, to know who is going to bring what. This isn't, so we have a lot of people to go after, and it's quite the opposite, so we can help them get rid of these materials in an orderly fashion, and again, for free. There was a recent event in San Diego, and they said that they were saving growers an average of $3,000 apiece on disposal costs. So again, this is something, I don't know if it's going to happen again. Again, this is just pre-registration. I'm trying to find out if there's even a lot of need in Calaveras County, because it is five counties, and we're just trying to get together a list so that we can help them get rid of these materials. And again, amnesty, we're just helping facilitate, nothing regulatory about it. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Thank you, Jessie. Is there any other board questions? Okay. Thank you, Jessie. Thank you, Lisa. Are there any other staff announcements before I move on?
There are no other staff announcements.
I'm not seeing any in the room. We will move on to general public comment. This is for any item of interest to the public that is within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas, may be addressed during the public comment period. Is there any public comment? I'm not seeing any in the room. Is there any online?
There is no online public comment.
Okay. With that, we move on to consent agenda. We have multiple consent agenda items. At this time, is there any board member that wishes to pull consent agenda item?
Item eight, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any other items? I would like to pull item nine. Okay. Do you have the, none other from the board? Is there any public comment on consent or staff? See, none. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda item with the exception of eight and none?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Supervisor, stopper.
Thank you. I'll keep it short. Item eight is to approve and sign the agreement with Dr. Ramirez to serve as the Calaveras County Health Officer of the period of July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023. I would like to make a suggestion that we have two of our supervisors reach out to another doctor, maybe in our area, see if they're willing to take the position, someone who's a little more in touch with our constituents within our county and understands how business is running, or how to treat people properly. I'll leave it at that for now.
Okay. Any supervisor?
Yeah, I want to understand what you're saying first. You want to sign the contract?
No, I don't want to approve this right now. I want to put it out and see if there's a possibility, if there's someone else that's willing to come and do this.
Well, this contract ends on June 30, and we're required to have a medical doctor by the state. This contract says that at any time, we can terminate it or he can terminate it, and I think there's a 30-day notice that we have to give that we're terminated. So if, why not approve the contract, but then ask Judy to go out with RFPs? So we have some process time there, and we're still covered. We don't have the state coming and complaining and appointing somebody or whatever. And then during that time, when we get RFPs out and we get some applicants in, we can go through them, and then we can say, you know, thank you very much.
That's a reasonable way to proceed also, Mr. Toffenelli.
I do have some issues. I will say that I tried to call Dr. Ramirez twice, and he did not respond to my call, and it was concerning, an issue that had to do with Mountain Valley EMS and some of the things I heard that he was saying, along with another doctor that's in the southern county, and did not respond to my phone call. And I think for $166,000, when a chairman of the board from Mountain Valley EMS, which is the agency he was speaking of, and the vice chair of this board calls you, you would at least respond or give him a phone call back, but I got neither. So I'm a little bit irritated by the way he does treat people. It seems to be even when he was up here on the board, when we were doing the COVID updates, his, why are you asking me questions? So I do have some issues, I feel, in the same way.
And I, oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to confirm Supervisor Toffenelli, it is, the contract does give the county the right to terminate with, on 30 days' notice, your cut.
On 30 days' notice. That's correct. Yeah, right.
Supervisor Calloway? I haven't had that experience with Dr. Ramirez. Also, if you remember, it took us a long time to even find a health officer when Dr. Kalata left. And Dr. Ramirez is a certified public health officer in addition to his other duties. We did look within the Troy County area to find someone. There was no MD that wanted to take the position, and I happened to be talking to someone who is involved with Health and Human Services in another county, and they're going to be paying over $300,000 for a public health officer, if they can even find one. So they're still hard to come by. I didn't interpret anything during COVID comments. I didn't perceive his performance the way my colleagues do. So I think we're fortunate just to have somebody and someone that's certified in public health. That's my take. I'll support, you know, approving this, and if the board wants to go out and look around in an informal way initially versus a request for proposal, I would support that.
Is there any other board comment?
I would be open to seeing a different RFP, but my concern lies with what Supervisor Toffenelli has said with not having with an officer covering the county. So if there's a way to navigate that coverage, as well as look out into other options, I am open to that.
Okay. I was just going to say, the board could certainly, you know, approve the item and then direct Ms. Allen to do an RFQ, which is, I believe, the process we did last time. Right, to go out and solicit, see if there's anyone out there and go through that process again. I mean, I think Supervisor Calloway is right. I don't know how fruitful it's going to be, but we can absolutely try.
What is, oh, sorry, Jack.
My only comment is, because this is controversial and the nature of things, I don't like the fact that I'm seeing this two weeks before this contract is up. We knew that this was going to be controversial, and we got put in a box, so I just don't appreciate that. We should have looked at this a month ago.
How did we know it was going to be controversial? I didn't know that.
Okay. I felt it was, I should say. I correct my language. I felt it would be controversial.
I would concur with you, Mr. Garmendy. So would I.
And maybe the way that we look at it too is, in a, I know COVID is still here, but in a post, reevaluating our outreach and communication with our community, and maybe we are looking at a different plan as we go out of this and navigate this together. So maybe that's something that can be calculated into that, that look. So Sarah, you had a suggestion. Oh, stopper.
I was going to say, you know, barring the, if there's any public comment before we get to it, I'm willing to, you know, make a motion in line with what Mr. Toffenelli said, you know, more than a reasonable way to deal with the situation as we move forward. But, you know, at that point, barring any public comment.
So you had that suggestion, just to confirm, and then I'll go to public comment.
Yeah, so just to clarify, the motion would be to approve the contract but direct staff to solicit, do a competitive process or solicit other potential interested parties. Is that?
After, after public comment, mostly to those terms that I want to possibly see. Well, I would like to ask that, you know, you know, when we went out for public health directors before, things were very controversial, and I think, and I think, you know, most of those people that would have qualified, especially in our area, that said, no, not at this time, were making a very intelligent move. You know, politically as well, even if they do have concern for their community. I think that potentially, you know, I would like to ask, at the same time, you know, my motion would be somewhat in the terms of what Sarah's going, at the same time, I would like to ask maybe if Mr. Garmendy and Mr. Toffenelli would be willing to go to Mr. Rand, Dr. Randy Smart and sit down with him and see if he's willing at this time and have a conversation with him and tell him how much our community would appreciate having him come forward, and then putting forward the RFQ through staff at that time if he's willing.
I'm willing to do whatever the board directs. I would, I would ask a quick question for counsel. The existing contract, if we don't approve this right now, does the existing contract go to month-to-month or some similar form, or is it just cleanly severed?
I believe the current contract terminates at the end of June.
So it's not something we could punt?
Right. Well, it is something I was going to ask if we could punt until next week, just seeing if there could be a conversation happening between now and then.
Yeah, so the, the current contract terminates at the end of June, and it would require, to amend that or extend that would require both parties to agree, but it's, it's an option. But as you, I mean.
Maybe, maybe that's a good solution. Maybe we dig deeper and take a closer look at the contract, see what we can do, and give us all a little bit of time to contemplate. I mean, if it's not, I mean, does it matter if it's today or next week?
I mean, I would ask Ms. Allen, I don't, no, legally, I mean, it's in place through the end of this month.
Whatever the board wants to do.
I'm open to both options. I'm not trying to put the county in a hard place with the state by any means, but at the same time, if we could, you know, another week or today, don't think it's going to hurt much, don't really think that we're going to be able to get to a different resolution by then, but I don't think it will hurt to buy another week and move, move forward and see if we can see some interest there, if the board's.
And I will just note one thing, you know, as I meant, to extend, to amend or extend the current contract, you would obviously require the consent of both parties to the contract, whereas if we, if we were to enter into a new contract, the county does have the unilateral right to terminate on 30 days' notice. So.
You just already signed a new contract.
My only, I hear why pushing it out next week. My only concern is not really fair to staff and giving them enough time to come back with information, unless the two of you are going to go out and report back to the board. But I don't, I just want to be realistic with that timeframe of expectation, because if they come back next Tuesday and say we need some time, are we just shooting ourselves in the foot, when we should just go ahead, do it, and then in the meantime, direct the two supervisors to talk to the individual as well as the RFP? I am just throwing another.
You're absolutely right, Madam Chair. I, you know, as chair last year, I understand that the runway's too short, you know, you will be doing, approving an agenda probably tomorrow that won't have any adjustments to it, and too short of a runway. At the same time, I think it's part of the message we're delivering right now. So, you know.
I just don't want unreasonable expectations if there's not a stack of information and backup when we cover the agenda.
I don't see much change until next week. You're absolutely right, but I don't see, I don't see any, I don't see any pain or problem with it at the same time.
As long as that's the understanding of that expectation for next week. Just want to make sure.
I just want to make sure the board has appetite for going that route. If not, if you don't have appetite, then I'll, I'll make, I'll make a motion more to what Mr. Toffenelli and Ms. Edwards.
Can we go to public comment? Please. Okay. Is there any public comment? Corey. Good morning.
Good morning, members of the board. Corey Allen, Health and Human Services Agency Director. My responsibility as your Health and Human Services Agency Director is to ensure that we meet both your boards and the community's needs for public health. If you know me at all, you do know, I hope, that I value strong leadership that leads with grace, that listens and learns and responds, and can be adaptive to the community need. It's important to me to acknowledge that, because yes, we do require a health officer, and I also believe that we require good stewards. And I believe that Dr. Ramirez, under a very difficult one-year period, has truly been faced with the greatest challenge that we could have envisioned. The health officer in each county holds at least 171 distinct duties. The health officer is arguably an indispensable part of government function and is the county's obligation to, quote, "take measures as may be necessary to preserve and protect the public health." He must follow all laws, regulations, codes, and rules, which includes the California Health and Safety Codes 10100 and 101025, just to name two of them. I'm sorry? Oh. The board is required to ensure that the health officer has sufficient authority and resources and that the organizational structure does not impede the health officer from carrying out these duties. Many, I'm sorry, I feel like I'm speaking out of turn, just reading faces, but I'll continue. The health officer, by virtue of their position, is going to undoubtedly push buttons and has throughout California and throughout this nation, because they are required to activate orders that restrict our will, that restrict our freedoms, that we're not accustomed to, and that comes because of a worldwide pandemic. It comes when we have things like a rabies outbreak or incidents where an individual must either quarantine a pet for an incredible amount of time, or he must order euthanasia in certain situations. None of these are comfortable. I want to acknowledge that we are in a rural community and that Dr. Ramirez does not reside in this community. I do want to tell you, I've gone through his contract from beginning to end. I'm seeing that he has met every element of his scope of work. There's every element that requires that he be responsive to us. I could say that he has done so. Supervisor Toffenelli, Dr. Ramirez and I did speak about the incident, about the phone call, and I want to state, he did call back, left a message. I don't know if it was on an incorrect voicemail, but he most certainly has alerted me on two occasions, that he did return that call and then did not want to harass or continue to pursue. And I see that that is not something that you've experienced, so I just wanted to make sure that I shared that notion. He was concerned in that instance about what, he understood to be a potential Brown Act conflict, but again, he's not a politician, he's a health officer. And again, I don't speak to that, that's a legal.
He should stay out of politics then. That's my comment. And he didn't. And he didn't.
Okay. So thank you so much for allowing me to communicate. I wanted to state that, as has been mentioned, it is a contract that can be taken out within 30 days. At any time in the last 12 months, we could have had that conversation, I'm willing to have it at any time. It's a very short turnaround, and that gives us a lot of ability. So I will work with you in any way you need. I want to acknowledge how you have been feeling about his tone, and I appreciate that you've been candid about that. I will continue to work to make sure that your board is satisfied with the work of the health officer moving forward. If that includes an RFQ, I'm happy to do any effort on that. And with that, just, I'm here to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Corey. Is there any other public comment? Are there online?
There is no online public comment.
Okay. Thank you. See, then in the room, no online, I'll bring it back to the board. Is there a motion for this agenda?
Can you repeat your original suggestion?
I can try. I think it was a motion to approve the item, but to direct staff to conduct an RFQ or RFP process to solicit other potential individuals who might be willing to serve as the health officer.
What she said plus, I would, I would definitely ask if it's the will of the board that Mr. Toffenelli and Mr. Garmendy, or Supervisors Toffenelli and Supervisor Garmendy, sit down with Mr. Randy Smart and, or Dr. Randy Smart and have a conversation with him, and hopefully, hopefully we can come to an agreement.
There's a motion? There is, Caroline?
Just want a clarification. Even if Dr. Smart says, yes, he's interested, we'd still have to go out for a request for proposal, correct?
We wouldn't have to, no. It's a services contract, so we can, so maybe then the motion would be as stated, or as stated, but to go out to an RFP or RFQ process if Dr. Smart is not interested.
Right. Very good, good question, Caroline.
Okay, so we have a motion by stopper. Is there a second?
So you amend your motion.
Clarify. Okay. We have it all written down.
Okay. There is amended motion on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
All those opposed?
I said aye.
Oh, okay. Callaway? Yes, okay. Five oh. Thank you. Okay, next item that was pulled, item number nine by myself. I have some questions. Kelly, I think this is a great idea. Caltrans has been talking about it for months. We've been getting that information at the call. One of the questions I have, and it's no longer in my district, so I may be speaking for a supervisor that may disagree, but up until recently, what I was hearing from the community in Vallesito because of the traffic coming from Petaluma, from Toowalemie into Calaveras at that intersection, which would still be on the state highway, not on Petaluma Road, just to clarify, welcoming signage on whether to head up the hill or down the hill. So I just wanted to see why that wasn't put into a consideration or why this wasn't more open to getting outside of just the seven that were identified.
Sure. We had a very, very short timeline to bring the item to Caltrans. They contacted us like on a Tuesday and we had to have an application back in by Friday, I think it was. So it's extremely short. We scrambled a little bit to find right-of-way areas on the state highway that would meet the requirements that Caltrans had. That being said, we may not even be able to do these locations. These are just preliminary ones that we've identified. So as we move forward, I can definitely bring back to Caltrans the idea about Vallesito, potentially looking at those sites as well. So this is the application, this is the agreement. If we're able to meet what we've told Caltrans, great. But the gentleman we're working with, Sam, he's very flexible, and so I'm hoping that, you know, if I come back to him with an idea for Vallesito, maybe it's something we could potentially add. Also, if when we go out to bid, the costs come in under what we're estimating, perhaps we can add more sites. So I won't promise you anything, but I can definitely say we can look at it and potentially come back with more locations.
What would be public participation into what this is going to also look like? Because while each of these locations are unique in their own way, just is there a uniform consistency? Countywide, that is going to be looking at what the design is going to look like, or how does that work?
So that's two parts. So we're going to be looking at hiring a consultant that will do the engineering and architecture for us. And that's where a meeting with the public is going to be so important, to decide whether we want to do uniform for every community, do certain communities want their own flavor? We already know for Angels Camp, they have a design that's already been approved by their city council. So I think for them, we would definitely, you know, not definitely, but we would probably use what design they've requested already. So that might not be good for Valley Springs, you know, that might not be good for Vallesito or another location. So it's a work in progress at this point.
Okay, thank you for that, Claudia.
Just a quick question, Madam Chair. Kelly, thank you very much for coming today and bringing this. What is the, I was trying to, when I was going through the packet yesterday and trying to figure it out, I didn't see any examples. Is there anything that I, some reference on what this monument is? Is it just a sign? Is it a physical structure?
Sure. I can send you all the information for what Angels Camp has proposed. It's actually like a structure. It kind of looks like a wall. It says Angels Camp. It's got some frogs jumping on it. It's quite beautiful, I think. So it's a little bit more than the ox cart and the, you know, the gold in the ox cart type thing that we've had around the county kind of informally through the Visitors Bureau. Yeah, so I mean, it could be that or it could be more. That's the beauty of the project.
Sounds like we're going to work through it, but I would love to see some examples, just so I can. And if any money falls off that court, court, off that orc cart, I would like to, you know, you have another highway going up the country, so we could always use one. Then people generally know when they're in West Point, but, you know, we could say.
Absolutely.
Those orc carts were Chamber of Commerce.
No, they're great. I think those wayfinder signs are great.
Not everyone knows when they're in West Point, Jack.
Superbike or coconut?
I started directing this stuff.
So I have a question. Are these going to be located on private properties or in the right-of-way of Caltrans?
They will be in Caltrans right-of-way.
Okay, all right. So there's no dealing with having to get permission?
No, sir.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Of course, anytime.
With that, is there any public comment? I'll start online.
There is no online public comment.
And she and I in the room, I'll bring it back to the board. Is there a motion to approve, confirm this item? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to the regular agenda. And I'll have the clerk read out regular agenda item number 12.
Item 12, action item, human resources, introduce, waive, per seating, and authorize summary publication of an ordinance adopting a salary increase for the coroner public administrator.
Judy.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair, member of the boards. I am bringing back the item as requested by the board last week. We took the Enyo, as suggested by Supervisor Garry Mindy. We took the Enyo salary and prorated according to the population and then brought it out to our population, which made the salary 64,247. We averaged out Enyo and the deputy coroners in Stanislaus County and came up with the salary of 70,366 annually, which is an increase of $4,139 annually.
Are there any questions for Judy? Okay, any, do you have anything else, Judy?
That's.
Okay, okay. With that, is there any public comment? Hi, Kevin. Call my name up. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. Oh, where do we start here? First, we started out at 15 cents for a raise. Then we went to $7.70, and now we're, if we do dollars, we're at $1.99. So I'm hoping we can kind of meet in the middle. Looking at Enyo County's budget, if you times the population, times the salary there, their population is 18,382. So the cost to the county taxpayers is $3.83 per person. Does that make sense to you? What's a dollar thirty-nine if you go with, so the Enyo County, in fact, is he online by chance? Is there anyone online calling in?
Madam Chair, I apologize, I interrupted. I didn't want to start a conversation.
Yeah.
The Enyo County suggested salary for the year 73086. The county coroner, if you look, actually takes, I believe it's 20,000, is that a correct figure? By the, 25, and he gives $300 to each deputy. There's three deputies, so they get, there's $300 a week goes to each deputy. No benefits, no nothing. And then he gets the money from, he does own the mortuary. It was stated in the last meeting that I own the mortuary here in Calaveras County. I do not. I work there. So he takes care of all the cases for Enyo County as well as Mono County. Every case in Mono County is a coroner's case, so the money comes in from that also. So, so the Enyo County deputies, as I said, get $300 a week, flat. No benefits, and that's based on the full salary. If you bring in Stanislaus County, they get 3678 per hour, which is about five bucks an hour more than me if you bring in the Stanislaus County deputies, as she said. Another way to calculate it is, I was looking at the way they calculated your raises, and it was done by an ordinance. And I was wrong when I said, I thought it was way more than it was, but it looks like you guys averaged $2 an hour or something like that. Is that right, for the raise for the board of supervisors? So if you take the raises that, if you use a formula like that, the electeds got $13.28 an hour raise, the board of supervisors got a $2 an hour raise. So if you use the same formula, that comes out to an average of, that comes out to $55.12. You divide that by five, is 1124. And so if you cut it in half and use the same formula, my raise would be $15.51, or, excuse me, would be $5.51. So that being said, like I said, you came back with $1.99. I was hoping we could maybe meet in the middle somewhere. We went from 7.71 to, well, 15 cents to 7.71, and now we're at $1.99. So you guys have the discretion, and I'd like to see fair. If you go over, and this is it, you know, this is my final, my final say here. The sheriff and the DA both got a, well, the sheriff got a $19.30 raise. The DA got roughly 13.28, or, excuse me, something like $13. The other electeds got 13.28. The chairman of the board got $1.83, board of supervisors got 2.03, and I got, I'm looking at $1.99. So hoping that we could meet somewhere in the middle. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Is there any other public comment? Is there any online?
There is no online public comment.
Okay. Bring it back to the board, Judy. Is there any other information before we, you have?
No, unfortunately.
I just want to make sure.
We had to have the item in hours later.
Okay. Is there any board comment or questions for either Judy or Kevin? Okay. Is there any direction from the board on how they feel to proceed? I know this isn't a fun topic, but, none? And then staff has a recommendation in front of us. If there's no comment from the board, is there a consideration, a motion to at least move staff's recommendation in the agenda?
I support moving staff's recommendation. I understand what Kevin was saying. I couldn't write fast enough for all the different pages. We asked staff to come back and add Enyo. And we just discussed this at quite a bit of length. And it's, I think it should be where it is, based on the work that we asked to have brought back. So I will support staff's recommendation.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second, Madam Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nay? Fiona? Okay, five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Moving on, we have regular agenda item number 13. If the clerk could please read out the agenda item.
Item 13, informational item, economic and community development. Receive a presentation about the Community Economic Resilience Fund, CERF, program and its participation requirements.
Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, honorable board, Kathy Galino, your Economic and Community Development Director, here to talk about a very interesting and exciting funding opportunity for our county. The Community Economic Resilience Fund is monies that were set aside for the state for 13 regions identified. We are, what's considered the Eastern Sierra region, and it consists of Amador County, Calaveras, Alpine, Toowalemie, Mariposa, Enyo, and Mono County. So it's a seven-county region that represents the Eastern Sierra. There's funding set aside one time for the SURF funding, which is five million for planning for the region. And planning is going to be looking like trying to find economic opportunity that also promotes greenhouse gas reduction, better-paying jobs, infrastructure, and many, many more things. It's pretty new and it's quick-moving. Following the $5 million for planning and developing a roadmap, as it were, then there's $40 million that will be approximately allocated to the seven-county region for implementation, which is very exciting because typically you can get planning dollars, but you rarely get implementation dollars to actually make things happen. And today I have Steve Frisch, who is the Executive Director with the Sierra Business Council. He provided a presentation at the Central Sierra Economic Development District meeting in May and then did a lunch and learn session on June 1st. And I was very impressed with this gentleman. He has a lot of information and knowledge on how we could promote this program and this opportunity in Calaveras County. So with that, I'll turn it over to Steve.
Great. Thank you very much for the timed introduction. And thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board for agendizing this item today. We're really excited about moving forward with it. I'm going to take the liberty of sharing my screen for a second, so hopefully you can all see my screen now. I have probably maybe five to 10 minutes of introduction, and I'm happy to take questions. So as Catherine said, Sierra Business Council is working on submitting an application to manage the Community Economic Resilience Fund project for the Eastern Sierra region of the state. There are 13 regions in the state, and you'll see a map in just a minute that shows those regions. Let me give you just a little bit of background on this project. So the Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development has long recognized that economic development, kind of strategic planning in California, really can't be done on a statewide basis because of the really significant differences between the different regions of the state. That some of the regions are international ports, some of the regions are major urban areas, some of the regions are rural regions like ours, and that really a fundamentally different strategy needed to be developed around these different regions of the state. With the allocation of American Rescue Plan and CARES Act funding to the state of California, they decided to set aside a certain portion of that funding to work on economic development strategic planning and then implementation across the state. This is a joint project of three state agencies. The Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development, the Labor and Workforce Development Agency, and the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. So a little bit about Sierra Business Council. We're a Sierra-based nonprofit organization. We work across the entire region. Some of you may know us from having worked in the region on energy and climate action planning projects, largely around measurement, greenhouse gas emissions, and energy efficiency and other things. We have done dozens of energy efficiency projects in Calaveras County. We're also very active in the biomass field, where we've been working with the Mountain Electric Company on the development of the Willseyville facility and finding financing for that project. So we have a pretty strong presence in the region, although admittedly, I would love to have a stronger presence in the Central Sierra Nevada. Our role in the SURF process is that we would be pursuing the role of the regional convenor and fiscal agent for the SURF effort on behalf of the Eastern Sierra region. And we have been coordinating the application process and kind of the understanding of what would be necessary for local economic development capacity with the Central Sierra Economic Development District and with the Eastern Sierra Council of Governments. As I said, the SURF is a one-time state general fund disbursement of $600 million to regions across California to support inclusive and low-carbon economic development. So this funding was originally sourced from the American Rescue Plan funding, but looking at the. at the federal strings attached as far as the timelines for disbursement of funds, in this year's, or last year's budget, rather, they swapped out the funding from an ARP source to a general fund source. So it is now a general fund-sourced program, so it has less strings attached. As Catherine previously noted, the program objectives are to look at thirteen regions across the state and do a Phase One planning process. Each region would be funded with roughly five million dollars for the planning process, and then there's a follow-on pot of funding, which is five hundred million dollars for implementation. Uh, the timeline for the process, for the planning process on Phase One is roughly eighteen to twenty-four months. The planning solicitation was released on May twenty-sixth. We're working diligently on getting an application in by July twenty-fifth, although we're hoping to have drafts of documents available for people to review by July twelfth. The funding would be awarded in September with contracting in October and would commence in November. Um, and then concurrent with this timeline, the, the three agencies are also developing guidelines for the disbursement of implementation funding that would be targeted at implementing the projects identified in the planning phase. Uh, the requirements for Phase One planning and the, the portions of this that we're working on right now are identifying the partnerships and coalitions that would be necessary to be formed to do the planning, including identifying a governance structure, which I'll cover more quickly at the end of this presentation, a community outreach plans and plans for inclusivity in the planning process. We're required to identify existing regional plans, and we're in that process right now, looking at things like the Central Sierra Economic Development Plans, the county plans, more information on, um, the, the county priorities around things like capital improvements and other things would be really helpful in this process. We're required to identify a draft set of vision, ambitions and goals to then be confirmed by the governance structure of the planning process itself, and we're also required to do some analysis of the stakeholders in the region, provide a regional summary of economic and climate hazards, and base our Phase One planning application on a local labor and industry market analysis, which we are working with the Center for Economic Development at Cal State Chico on right now. A brief note about the regions. When I'm on the east side of the Sierra, everyone laughs that this is called the Eastern Sierra Region. When I'm on the west slope of the Sierra, I think people think of themselves not necessarily as the Eastern Sierra, but, um, but, uh, for whatever reason, we are called the Eastern Sierra Region, seven counties, Amador, Mono, Inyo, Mariposa, Tuolumne, Calaveras, and Amador, comprising nineteen thousand square miles and a hundred and eighty-six thousand people. So we are basing our application on what we see as the current economic and future drivers. By the way, we see agriculture as a current economic driver as well, which is not included in this list for some reason, and then what potential high-growth industry sectors might be. It's important to note that the goal of this planning process is to identify and fund infrastructure projects that will create what are known as high-road jobs or higher-paying jobs within the region that then address the multiple objectives of the program that were laid out previously. We're currently doing outreach around the development of the planning process that includes outreach to stakeholders, including tribal, labor, community organizations, and public agencies. We've had very strong involvement from public agencies so far. We're also looking and, looking at and reviewing existing economic and climate development information within the region, including economic development strategies and plans that have been developed, broadband plans that have been developed, climate mitigation and adaptation plans that have been developed, and of course, the comprehensive economic development strategies that have covered the counties. Um, we know that the Central Sierra Economic Development District is in the process of updating their sets right now, and we are planning this process to be concurrent and to be able to share data between, uh, the Central Sierra Economic Development District sets and this SURF process. And then we're also required to look at economic and climate resilience opportunities and goals within the region. So, input on those issues is, is really important to us. Finally, one of the things that we're required to submit with the application is a governance structure, and we're working on that right now, and we welcome input on that, and actually have received a lot of really good input from, from recent meetings with local government members up and down the Sierra Nevada. But we're seeing the process being governed by, um, a High Road Transition Collaborative Council of twenty-one members, which would be comprised of three members from each county or cities within the counties, and then we're seeing five planning committees with seven voting members each, one focusing on equity, climate, and labor issues, one focusing on business and workforce development issues, one focusing on local government, and that includes cities, counties, and special districts, one focusing on data, planning, and drafting the strategy itself, and one focusing on identifying, creating a criteria for and recommending projects for inclusion in the plan. And, um, this governance model would have what's known as a modified consensus decision-making model, where essentially a straw, straw poll is taken. If there is objection to a decision, then there can be a vote, and the voting threshold would be fifty percent with, um, with committees and council on non-project issues, but a two-thirds vote requirement to matriculate projects. There's a lot of additional information available on this program, both on the Governor's Office of Planning and Research website. Uh, you can watch the announcement video from the state agencies on YouTube if you're so inclined, and then the California Labor and Workforce Development Agency guidelines and official guidelines for the project are posted on their site. Sierra Business Council will also be hoping, hosting another lunch and learn session tomorrow at noon to discuss the project. So, uh, with that, I wanted to, um, note that we have been coordinating our activities with the Central Sierra Economic Development District. I am anticipating that during this planning process, there would be a significant investment of capacity in the, the Central Sierra Economic Development District, and have been in conversations with Dave Taney about what that might look like, but I am anticipating that we would staff, um, the Central Sierra Economic Development District with funding from the planning grant for, um, for this project, when there would be a similar arrangement on the east side with the Eastern Sierra Council of Governments to increase capacity for the program. We're anticipating it would take three staff members to manage this project over three years. It's very heavy on public participation and kind of community, um, kind of joint community development of objectives. But an item of note, um, the projects that get identified in this process would then need to go through whatever their standard planning process is for approval, both at the local level and for seeking funding outside. If we were successful in developing a list of projects that could seek that forty million dollars in state funding, it is our, um, it is our intent to try to use those projects to leverage other state and federal pots of funding, and we do not think, based on our experience in other regions of the Sierra, that it would, um, it, it would not be impossible to leverage that money at at least two to three to one. So this could lead to a very substantial investment in the region in economic development-focused and high-roads, job-focused projects. So with that, I will stop and open it to questions or comments.
Thank you for that presentation. Um, I'm going to bring it back to the board. Is there any comments or questions from board members? Jack?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Steve, it's good to see you.
Nice to see you.
The, I just got to ask, who came up with that map?
Yeah, so that was an interesting process. That was an internal process between the Labor and Workforce Development Agency, GO-BIZ, and OPR, and they based the mapping on essentially labor market analysis, looking at like economic areas of the state. But there were a couple of interesting wrinkles in it, right? So you might have noticed that Orange County has its own region, and Kern County has its own region. Kern because of the, um, the really interesting issue being developed there around, um, oil and gas industry transition, and Orange County, I think largely because they didn't want to be considered LA. So, but, um, you know, the map, you know, regional maps in California are always like an interesting thing because we've identified probably thirty different identified regions, you know, or regional schema.
I, I just, I, I just have to think, you know, what kind of person in Sacramento is sitting there thinking, "We share a labor market or much in common, other than just being ruled with Inyo County." I mean, there are, Southern California is where their population, their tourist base comes from, ours comes from generally the Bay Area or the Valley. It really makes me question, I mean, these are great projects, but they're also, you know, all Consultants Employment Guarantee Act. Um, I think we're going to run out of consultants with all this studying we're doing.
So, by the way, Jack, that does lead to another really interesting issue, which is I think that whatever the regional economic development strategy is, is going to require both a west slope and an east slope component, because although there are a lot of similarities, there are some significant difference in, differences, and you just hit the biggest one, is that culturally, the west slope looks to the valley and the bay, and the east slope looks to LA, so they have different influencers as far as investors are concerned.
Yes. I guess my second question is, are the same yahoos who came up with this crazy map going to be the ones approving and determining which projects are valid for this forty million? I'm just curious, we're going to do all this work, and it's great, it's valuable work, I have no problem with it, but when we come up with forty million dollars worth of projects, who's making that call?
Yeah, so at the, so first off, we do not know what the criteria for the selection of those projects will be yet. We are anticipating that the implementation grant criteria will be out in October, so we will have the benefit of that criteria as we are developing projects in this Eastern Sierra region. But the, um, the process for applying for projects will be through essentially a competitive grant process into that five hundred million dollar fund. It will need to meet whatever that set of criteria is, and then it will be determined by the three agencies, the Labor and Workforce Development Agency, GO-BIZ, and OPR. So yes, the answer to your question is yes, the same yahoos who came up with the map will be reviewing and approving projects.
Thank you for understanding the question. Um, just my final question is, what do you guess, and I realize we're so insane, but what would a successful project look like for Calaveras County? So, what can we see in it for us?
So, one of the really good things about this program is that its definition of infrastructure is pretty loose, so that could include both, like, social and workforce education and training-type infrastructure, but it could also include hard infrastructure projects. So, for, I'll, I'll just give you an example of a project I heard about just recently that Columbia College is expanding its workforce education and training program around forest management and training people for forest careers. Investments in things like workforce education and training programs, investments in things like, um, implementation strategies around renewable energy or climate biomass utilization, I expect to be a significant issue in, in this discussion. So, so, um, investment in, um, the, the infrastructure to advance economic development in the region, like the CSAT, I would anticipate that, um, that that would be an eligible project in the implementation funding timeline, but hard infrastructure projects could be included as well. For example, you know, um, you know, planning processes for new structures, or, you know, a community fire break might be an eligible project. The two things that I have heard the, the state staff members talking about this wanting to shy away from, uh, because there are other sources of funding for it recently developed in the state budget, are direct investments in building housing and direct investments in middle and last-mile broadband because of the significant increased, um, pots of funding at HCD and the Public Utilities Commission for those purposes.
Thank you very much, Steve.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Stopper?
Thank, thank you for, for this. I asked for a little, little, what, last, last week or the week before, um, you know, it's been very fast-moving for, moving forward, it's been very fluid. I think the states, you know, along with your questions, it's a lot, a lot of everybody on, on our collaboration of everybody from these seven counties have been asking Supervisor Gary Mindy, so that, you know, repeatedly, you know, because we're still confused, a little bit. But, uh, you know, I, you know, as, as I go forward, he, he did bring up some of those possible, uh, hard, hard infrastructure things, community fire breaks, um, possibly water infrastructure, you know, which could help with possibly, uh, development of, um, workforce housing, or, you know, with that. Um, I, another thing I keep in mind, charging stations, because we, you know, that, you know, people putting in those charging stations along, like, corridors like forty-nine and four, you know, where the historic areas, where we want people to come up and visit, but they might not be able to afford the fuel. At the same time, we're, you know, that's creating jobs and putting those in, so, you know, I, a lot, a lot of ideas being floated around. I definitely am happy that we're presenting this to the board, there's a lot of opportunity, it's moving very fast, and we'll see what the state decides, uh, as they move forward on what, what applies and what doesn't. But this five million dollars, um, you know, we're, we're talking about how we're going through Central Sierra Economic Development District for this side in collaboration with Sierra Business Council. I really appreciate them coming forward because it was, to get all these seven counties together is a feat of its own, you know, especially with the perspective that Mono County and, and Inyo County have from the eastern side, they, they, they want to be on their own, you know, they, they think they're on their own. But it's been a great learning curve, and now, now they're at the table, and I think there's, with this five million dollars that comes forward, my understanding, now it may have changed a little bit, or my understanding may not be there, is this five million dollars will be spread out between individual counties based on criteria, uh, for the planning going forward, working in collaboration with the others. Am I, am I wrong in that?
No, I think you're basically right in that, that during the planning process, that we're working on the budgets right now, but what we would anticipate is that roughly to two to two and a half million of that five million dollars is going to be necessary during the planning process for all of the labor market analysis, the convening of meetings, the, you know, all of the different components that are necessary for this, the identification of the planning processes, the climate vulnerability kind of assessment information and everything else. But that the other two and a half million dollars would be used to support regional organizations for participation in building capacity, and that's the type of capacity investment we're thinking about in the Central Sierra Economic Development District and the S-COG on the east side. So my discussions with Dave Taney have been somewhere between a three and five hundred thousand dollar capacity investment in the Central Sierra Economic Development District in order to do its work over the next two to three years, and, and that would of course be focused around kind of, um, developing the information that would go into, into this SURF plan, right? Uh, but also would be capacity that would then stand up the set to be much more active on economic development issues, right? And then also, some of that remaining two and a half million dollars, I think, would go to community-based organizations for participation. We're particularly interested in making sure we can get tribal participation in these processes, so some of that money would be available as stipends for participation in the process itself. But some of it might also be available for, um, kind of implementing the baseline, um, planning processes that need to be completed in the region in order to have kind of a, a completed economic development strategy. So, um, for example, I know that Calaveras is looking at- So, for example, I know that Calaveras is looking at doing a climate action plan, and we've been working on that project, so, you know, there might be some funding available for the individual communities for some of their planning needs as part of this process.
Thank you, Steve.
Are there any, Marita?
Hi, Steve. I've never heard the expression "high road region," is that the new buzzword for?
So, this is a term that came out of the Labor and Workforce Development Agency. They've been using it for the last five or six years. The idea behind a high road job is that this is a job that will essentially help take people who are working at below area median income to above area median income. So, you know, a high road job is a job that pays above the current AMI, and is focused around essentially moving people who are traditionally in lower income levels into the, into the middle class. So, the state has done a whole series of workforce education and training programs around what they call high road jobs through the, through a high road jobs partnership, and is really designed to try to increase incomes for the lower levels of income in California.
So, that's why it's going to be called the HRTC?
Yeah, although we do have the opportunity, that's the term that is used in the program's solicitation. We would have the opportunity to rebrand that once we submitted an application. I'm not sure anyone in our region really knows what a high road transition collaborative is, and we probably might want to call it something else.
I mean, I just asked Jack before I asked you.
Yeah.
I haven't heard that before. I have a couple, is the ag industry going to be included? I mean, that's something the Sierra Business Council is known for.
Absolutely, yeah. And, you know, that, based on the project criteria that we can discern so far, and my caveat is, the implementation grant guidelines are not out yet, so we don't know for sure what that criteria is. But I think agriculture would definitely be included, including particularly things like ag tech, training for ag tech, local food systems, really interesting opportunities around that. We know that there's been some discussion of whether or not food processing could be included, including, you know, there's been discussion of a regional slaughterhouse facility or a regional processing facility for cattle that would make, you know, would shorten the supply chain around that. So yes, agriculture would be included, and we consider it a significant economic driver in the region.
And one more question, is there going to be a rural set aside for projects? Do you know?
Yeah, so, we have advocated, that is, Sierra Business Council has been advocating that within that five hundred million dollar implementation funding pot, although consistently in the discussion, they've been saying roughly forty million dollars per region, that is not cemented in their guidelines yet. So we have been advocating for forty million dollars per region, and we will continue to advocate for that. So, we're big fans of rural set asides. We think we will probably be successful because of the way the grant kind of program has developed so far, but we can't guarantee that until we see the guidelines. However, I do think one of the big opportunities in this program is leverage, that once projects are identified in a comprehensive economic development strategy through your CSATs and are thus eligible for US EBA funding, and once they're identified as SURF projects, that matching the SURF implementation grant funding with other state and federal funding pots will multiply the impact of these investments. And that would be, I think, a key strategy that SBC would bring to the table, which is trying to identify projects that would actually create a three to four to one multiplier, which we've been successful with in other regions of the Sierra.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marita.
Are there any other questions? You, the other supervisors have asked the same questions I had, so thank you for those answers. The one question I have for you is, what is our role going forward to support this process? Where does that leave us as the governing board to support the representatives who are advocating for this at year level?
So, great, great question, Madam Chair. So, what we are asking as far as help from Calaveras County is concerned is, number one, we will shortly be circulating a letter of participation. We hope to get clarity on what will be required in that letter of participation in the bidders' conference on Wednesday. So, we would love Calaveras County to sign on in support of this process. Number two, we would love your help in identifying stakeholders, people that we need to reach out to in order to ensure an inclusive process. And then number three, when it comes time, when the, when the grant is awarded, to work on developing the governing council, we would love Calaveras County representation with at least one local government representative, preferably more, on that high road transition council and within the committee structure. So we would be hoping that, assuming the grant is awarded, that Calaveras County would be an active participant in the planning process, and that there would be someone appointed from the Board of Supervisors to participate in that process.
Thank you for that clarity. Is there any other questions from the board before I move it to public comment? Okay, and then, is there any public comment, any online?
There is no online public comment.
Okay, and she and then in the room, I'll bring it back, this is just an informational item, so thank you Supervisor Stoppa and Kathy for bringing this. Steve, thank you for being here today to give this presentation and answer our questions. If there isn't anything else, we can move, oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Stoppa?
Steve brings up a good point, representation. We have a meeting to, possibly tomorrow. Kathy, are you planning on being part of that meeting?
I am.
Just want to get the blessing for the board, for her and I to work forward on this and try to do the best we can for Calaveras within this eastern Sierra coalition.
I don't know, have you skied at Mammoth?
At my?
Yeah, Ms. Callaway, I have.
Well, then I guess you could do that.
I spent a lot of time down three ninety-five, my years when I lived up in Tahoe. Yeah, and I'm very familiar with the eastern, I love that area. It's great to visit, you know, and, huh? Great place to visit. Right. I'm not moving there yet, Mr. Toffenelli. I got to retain this position in Calaveras County for at least four more years as of now.
Four and a half.
Four and a half, well, we'll see how long I make it. Thank you, Steve, I appreciate your time, and, you know, with the blessing with the board, I would like Kathy to really take, you know, when she has time to take the lead on this, I mean, it goes right hand in hand with economic development, and, you know, this is why she's here, and I will be there to support her.
Well, thank you very much Supervisor Stoppa, and thank you, thank you Kathy for all of your help, I really, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, what I'm hearing is you're volunteering to be one of the representatives for Calaveras County as we move through this?
Well, I was kind of volunteering, Kathy.
Informational item. It's informational, I am not an action. I will move forward, maybe if we do need to make an action item, I think that can bring that back based off of the recommendation of Supervisor Stoppa and Kathy, of what is needed to continue to do that support. But for now, I think everyone has their roles geared out for them, what they're supposed to be in. Is there anything else you want to add to that, Sarah? Okay, Stoppa?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yep, okay, with that, we'll wrap it up, and again, thank you for being here and giving this presentation, I really appreciate it. Have a great day. With that, we'll move on to our regular agenda item number fourteen.
I'm sorry, do you mind if we take a quick break?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we'll take a five-minute break. Okay, thank you. I believe we are getting into regular agenda item number fourteen. If the clerk can please read out the item.
Item fourteen, informational item, Administrative Office, provide direction to staff regarding July twenty twenty-two through December twenty twenty-two study sessions.
And at this time, I'll turn it over to the C.A.R.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, Krista Van La from the Administrative Office. So if you will recall, back on May twenty-fourth, we originally heard this item. Supervisor Toffenelli was not available to participate, and we wanted to specifically circle back and see how you feel about the things we discussed. We discussed an IHHS A building update. We had originally planned to do that on June twenty-first. I would like to move that item to July, if that's all right with your board.
Is there, I don't, is there any concerns from the board?
Do you have something planned other than that for the twenty-first? Since that's the third Tuesday, and we use that as a study session.
We have broadband on the twenty-first, so I think that's going to be pretty robust.
Yeah.
So, we spoke about an IWM item, I think there was general consensus that that needs to come.
I'm in favor of that.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Parks and Rec, and specifically as it relates to being an economic development tool, and to the extent that your board would like to give us more specific direction on that item, assuming that you still want to bring it back, I'd be, I'd welcome any feedback that you wanted to give us on that.
Do you have a majority for that? Okay, that's fine.
Yes.
That's fine.
Okay. And if any of you have any specific feedback or concerns, just email me, and we'll make sure to try and address those things, that item. Animal shelter update, I don't know that that needs to be a study session, but I will bring in that as an action item, probably in July, to let you know where we are at there.
You'll bring animal shelter in July?
As an action item?
As an action item? So you anticipate having plans and everything?
Just as an info item, as an update, to let you know where we're at with our ten consultants, et cetera, for super mitigation and the plan. CIP and strategic planning, I recommend doing this one probably in December, although I'll certainly take your direction if you prefer to have that sooner, but I feel like that'll give us time to continue to develop the strategic plan, and then we can do it in anticipation of what our budget process is going to look like for next year for CIP.
Yeah, Krista, is there a reason that we can't talk about the animal shelter, the CIP, which includes the DA's building, IHHS A building, same time?
The IHHS A building?
Right. I mean, maybe that one's further out, but certainly the animal shelter and the DA's building should be ready for some, there's got to be something going on.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Jack on that, I think it's a good point, and maybe even we could have some discussion somewhat on the whole CIP list.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm open to that, I think that'd be a good idea.
I concur.
Okay. Okay, so we'll schedule that for July for the second meeting.
Yeah, we'll start buildings, that's CIP, and that way we can look at it holistically, too.
Yeah, because there is a whole list, and, you know.
Yeah. There sure is.
And Chair, I got one item, I was hoping we could talk about, I don't know if it needs to be a study item, but I'd like to get some direction for staff on this. We did the, we did our general plan, we went out and we stepped with the letter of the law, which I think was good, and we had a lot of things going on, but like all big projects, there's a couple unintended consequences that came forward. Primarily in my district, there were several cases where we downzoned people's property. And we did our notification that is, was legal and correct, which was we notified, we posted it in the Valley Springs News, but I think, you know, we could all recognize that Valley Springs News doesn't get to all corners of this county. And even if it did, we took, we basically downzoned someone's property without sending them so much as a letter, saying that we were going to do this to them, so they had a chance to appeal, it just happened. And so, I don't know what the fix is, but I was hoping that this board can discuss either now or in the future, given some direction to planning on how we can come up with some sense of fairness around this. Because we've got, I've got a couple cases where people got moved from a C2 to a C1, and they were, and they didn't know, had already had plans moving forward, actually, some of them actually with the county, and we just downzoned them. And while that may be what this board wants to do, it seems only fair that we contemplate how we can notify people, and it may entail a bit of work. So I'd like to ask this, I'd ask us, our planning staff, sort of run this to ground, find out how big an issue it is, and how we might be able to remedy it, if we so choose to remedy it.
I thought we did notify people that, not just through a legal notice, that we notified each individual property owner what was being proposed. And I could be mistaken, but we discussed this as a board for the exact reasons that you're talking about.
All right.
And I thought planning did notify them. Somebody else might have a different take on that, but...
I was surprised to learn that we had not.
I see Mr. Elliott about there also has a mic on, so, okay. Good morning, Mr. Elliott.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the commission. We did what was most expedient, and by saying that, what I mean is that we actually sent notification and a newspaper of general circulation in the county, which, as it stands, it's a newspaper that is located in a part of the county that not every single, you know, county resident would have access to, and that is in Valley Springs. So Supervisor Gary Mendy is quite correct, we did not have, because of the volume of the notices, and I think the law is if it's over a thousand notices that have to be sent, that a newspaper of general circulation is an alternative, we did not do an individual notice, person to person. So, if your property fell within a group of properties that were one thousand parcels that were being rezoned, you did not get sent a private notice. If your property fell within a group of properties that were being rezoned, and there were less than a thousand of those, yeah, you may have gotten notices, but the notice you get would be the notice that is on record, which may be quite different. In one particular instance, for example, I was told, the notice actually went out to the site that was supposed to be rezoned, not to the property owner who actually owns the property. So, when you have these types of miscommunication, you know, best intentions, you know, nobody's trying to do this intentionally, but like Supervisor Gary Mendy said, you know, there are consequences to these actions. And when it comes to property ownership and property rights, I think it's something that we need to take very, very seriously, because our county is based on, very proud in property ownership, and in one particular instance... And in one particular instance, we actually took, by downzoning from C two to C one, we actually took the livelihood out of this particular community to the point where that most of the activities they were able to do prior to the rezon would not be deemed incompatible or non-conforming or even impossible. Some of them had planned to do several different things and come to realize that, well, oh, since the zone changed, you aren't able to do that. So what I'm hearing is that we are being directed with the majority of the board, of course, to kind of go and look at the, what is the magnitude of this problem? And what are the ways that we can easily rectify it? And that is what we would do if it been, if been told by the board to go ahead and do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Stopper, you have the light on?
Yeah. You know, being through the process, being on the Planning Commission in 2016, when we're doing the groundwork for these maps and discussing it, this issue came up quite a few times. I think there was letters mailed out during that time. But as we proceeded after going through more of the process, getting the E I R for the entire county, I think it kind of fell, because there was more changes made at that point when it moved on to a, for finalizing. At that time, I believe some of the notifications kind of fell off the radar with the assumption that a lot of these property owners had already been notified directly. And that not being the case, because they, things changed even further after the E I R, moving through the process. So I can see that, you know, a community like West Point being satellite out where they are could come have these issues because McCallum Hill was very involved. They had meetings there in McCallum Hill. Lucky for them, at that time, Frau McLaughlin was on the Planning Commission. And she did a great job communicating with the community at that time. But there was, there was a transition from point A to point B. And I think taking a look at it again to address those concerns, because it's always, you know, from my perspective, if we're changing, changing a designation or what the uses of the property and possibly devaluing that property, I have concern for that, for the people that own that property because they made it invested in based on what could be done at the time. So I'm definitely willing to take a look at it based on that.
Sarah?
And we did, as Mr. Elliott said, you know, our prior planning director in the planning department did comply with the law in terms of how notifications had to be given. And you're, and that's correct. You know, when we're talking certain numbers, once you get into a certain volume, like we had, publication is a legal form of notice. That said, we absolutely can look at what the options would be if the board is inclined to potentially make some changes and what we might have to do, you know, on the sequoia front, if we're talking about rezones or not. And we can certainly come back with what options would be.
Yeah. I just, I just, I think the general plan needs to be dynamic. We had such a buildup that Ben was a part of to get this last one done. And if we continually update it, we're not going to have that big project again. We could just, things change. And, you know, digging through this, I didn't recognize this when we were doing the general plan. And there were a lot of piece, moving parts. And, you know, you learn things as you go along and sometimes unintended consequences. I don't think there was any malicious or nefarious act by anybody. Just we learned.
Is there, Gary?
Yeah. Well, I have some properties too that are similar to what Jack is describing in the Burson area and down through the corridor there, Highway 12 corridor going towards Wallace, where the same thing happened there. The only question I would have, and I'm forward bringing this into study session, but trying not to get in a similar situation if we try and rectify this about opening a door for other properties, like he said, thousands, over a thousand. And each property, how are we going to identify which piece of property that was rezoned? Are we going to notify each one of those that we're having a hearing to do that? I, we could be opening another door, is all I'm saying, if we start going down that road. And then we're picking and choosing, you can, you can't. Yes, you, but no, you can't.
No, I think that's absolutely right, Supervisor Toffanelli, which is why my suggestion is that, you know, staff looks into the various options and comes back to the board and we can kind of identify what those, what consequences might result or what options are on the table.
Yeah. And like I said, I'm certainly open to having a discussion. If we decide to go forward, that's fine. I just want to make sure that we're fair to everybody that has the similar situation.
And also to take into consideration, if I may, we want to be careful of anything that may be viewed as significant impact and as we move forward, because we don't want to be stuck with having to do the whole thing over.
And I think, you know, for the everyday individual, you know, going through that process, it's difficult for them to understand what to be paying attention to if you're not in this every day. And so you, Supervisor Stopper, as an example, had the luxury of understanding what all of this meant. But Abigail isn't going to get that they needed to pay attention to some of these meetings as well or the significance of participating. And I think that a look back of lessons learned of how do we better get that information out as we go forward. I mean, we did a great job with the redistricting and doing that. So I think each time we do these things, we just need to learn. And maybe there's a window of look back just for that, particularly to address it. And then there's a certain time to close it as well and staff can look into it so we're not still dealing with this 10 years from now. And cut the window on ourselves as well. But still educate the public on, encouraging them to be actively involved, and this is why, too, you know. But it's complex. And it was the first time in a long time that the county had done it and things go through. So, so is there, I'm going to kind of pull, is there a head shake of yes to bring this back for informational items to discuss further? Okay, I'm seeing, okay, we're good. Thank you. Okay. Continue. Thank you for the input.
Thank you, Gabriel.
Krista, you're back.
All righty. So then next on the list is roads, regional projects with COG. So.
Yes, we need to bring that back because we need to discuss the next, there's another funding round. And we need to know what the priority is for the county. Say yes, please.
When would you like to see that item?
There is a deadline, so we need to look at the COG deadline for proposals.
July.
We need it sooner than later. It's coming up.
July 26th, the minute.
Okay. So coordinate with.
The COG, yeah. Yeah. So whatever that deadline is to bring back, please. Because I'm sure there are many supervisors that would like projects in districts.
Okay. Next on the list, oops, sorry. Bridges and roads, paving and safety.
I mean, if you look at the Public Works website, they have a list of projects for the next three or four years out. What is it?
Are we going back to the COG? Yes, but.
The COG, I thought we finished with the COG. She was just moving on.
Yeah, Public Works. And this is based on the conversation your board had on the 24th. If you would like me to strike that, I'm happy to.
I don't know. I would like to be on the website what the projects are. Are we looking to add to them? Then we have to find out where the funding's coming from.
Right.
I think part of that is the fact that we just deobligated about $100,000 and we did not have direction to priority from the board to Public Works on whether another project self-ready to utilize that $100,000. And instead, we had to deobligate it from the county, give it back to the COG, and it is now unknown with the Sacramento County COG. So I think the point of Public Works is we evaluating those list of projects and how we can be self-ready so we don't find ourselves in that position again. It's not adding water to the plate. It's just making sure we're ready so we don't do this again. Because that funding will be coming back in a couple of years when the loan's paid back. And are we going to be ready to, outside of the regional projects that we just discussed, to be brought back, we need to discuss internal projects that the board sees as a priority so we don't deobligate or have to run out and then scramble and figure out what projects are a priority. That way we can just move the money. I don't know. Does that make sense?
I hear what you're saying. I guess maybe I'm confused. The projects that are involved with some of the COG funding and the projects that are on the Public Works construction projects that they have and they have funding for. Did we, did we have to give back some of the projects that are on their list?
They finished, we gave money back for a project in West Point with a sidewalk improvement and the widening of the road. They didn't use $100,000 of it. So instead of coming to COG until they had this money left over, their project's done, they went to Caltrans and deobligated it.
Got it.
And so it was an issue, we could use it somewhere else or, but that's a separate issue on Public Works. I would like to bring Public Works, a study session also, just so we can see what the long-term game plan is going forward. We have a call for projects right now out for COG for our overall work program.
I was just, I wasn't sure if we were talking the same pots of money through COG or through their construction projects, which are three or four years out.
Yes.
I think both, to answer your question, Marita. I think it's going to, there's some overlap. And where can we maximize the dollars with that overlap? Okay. Okay.
And last but not least, housing element update.
Go ahead.
Housing element update.
Oh, yes. Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And I hope that includes like some of the building discussions, the infrastructure discussions. I mean, I hope that's weaving all of that to get, I just want to make sure.
It's an in-depth conversation. I would definitely agree with you. I think we need to have all the departments collaborate on what they bring forward because it's very broad. A lot of our departments throughout the county all have a little piece of that pie.
So how would you feel about October for that?
I think it needs to be sooner on some of this stuff because of the infrastructure. I know what I'm hearing from the special districts is they're concerned about certain things. I mean, if that's.
August. I'm trying to, I mean, there's going to be coordination on this.
Yeah.
And I'd like to include in that conversation our housing authority, Stanislaus. And I want to know what they've been doing for us, other than, I just like, I think they ought to be included. And I'd like, I would really anticipate and look forward to a very robust conversation.
Okay. Is there anything else you would like to add?
Stopper, you like to on?
I just, I want to confirm, when are we considering talking about I W M? Because we use I W M and then you keep asking everyone, everywhere else, when do we want this? But we never.
Same with Parks and Rec.
You're saying at the same time as Parks and Rec?
I mean, we also need a date for a month for Parks and Rec.
Well, I thought, yeah, we can, I thought, I thought we were going to do it multiple because it's a multi-layered, it's like housing, bring it back with another topic that may not take as long.
If I make a suggestion, I W M does fall within our capital improvements. C I P. So I think that can be, that can be lifted at the same time. You know, there's some different parts to it separate from the C I P. We need to talk about money and everything, but, you know, overall, it's two. It is a capital project that we have to deal with. Does that, does that help?
Sure. And Parks and Rec.
Would there be back on?
Yeah, I mean.
I'm just making sure.
I'm going to sound like Ben, but I W M, I W M, I W M. Let's get on it.
Sure. For I W M, when would you like, Parks and Rec? I recommend, you don't have anything really for the end of the year, so maybe October. There's a lot of heavy lift with these items, so.
Yeah, you know, that might be good because then when we do the call for project, that we might have a better idea and then it could piggyback into that item.
It could.
Because, I mean, we may need a master plan if we do go down that route. I don't know. But they could go hand in hand.
Leave it to the chair. It's her job. Figure out how to.
Navigate, yeah. Can we think a little bit, let's schedule for that, but can we think a little bit more? Because I think it might align at least pieces of the conversation in Parks and Rec with the call for projects. Because of planning, because we could, we could, we could, if the priority of the board during that discussion of regional projects, there is opportunity for planning. With then, if that is something, then that could help with your topic later on. But I think we should bring it in as an overlap, as a potential possibility.
Okay.
I mean, Gary and I can continue to discuss it with you, Krista. But I just don't want to leave a missed opportunity with funding. Okay. Any other comment from board members concerned, Marita?
I'd like to see an update on the zoning, just the status of the zoning update. Are there any red flags or hot buttons that they anticipate or have seen so far? I understand it's probably two years out or whatever, a year or two out. But I'd like to see an update on zoning. Thank you.
Would that, would that coincide with what Mr. Garrett Mindy would like coming forward on?
I don't see why we, I mean, I don't think we have a meeting for just a single topic. It seems like we could take a couple hours on each of these and stack them together, so.
We can incorporate that in the other one and let us know where they are with Title 17 and what's going on.
Be kind of planning day.
Cool.
Okay. So how about August?
Planning day.
Planning, well, planning day.
How about August or September for that?
I'm done with that.
Fine. What was the date for the I W M? Is that July?
Did somebody say I W M?
Okay. Is there any other online or can I take it to a public comment? You're good, Krista?
We're good.
Okay. Is there any public comment? And I'll start online.
There is no online public comment.
And seeing none in the room, I'll bring it back to the board. If there's no further comments or deliberations, is there anything to approve? Do you really need to do it?
No, this is just informational to prevent an option about scheduling.
Okay. And knowing that things may come up between now and the end of the year and we can all work to adjust that should something happen. Cool? Okay. Awesome. With that, we are done with, done the item number fourteen and we'll move on to supervisor announcement. I will start to my last with Supervisor Coway.
Nothing to report.
Supervisor Garandis?
R C R C, sorry. R C R C in Nevada County, Wednesday and Thursday. And broadband panel in Tahoe Thursday afternoon.
Thank you.
I don't have really think to report. I did attend COG meeting and. I did attend COG meeting, but I do have an important meeting for Mountain Valley MS Agency this coming Monday, and I'm supposed to be giving a presentation that we'll talk about later on the following Tuesday, the next Tuesday, so we'll see how it goes. Hopefully it's good news.
Thank you. Ben?
Nothing to report, Madam Chair.
And I too will be with Supervisor Garrett Mindy up in Nevada County, and that's all I have to report. And we need to move, we'll do this a little different, so hold on a sec. Don't get too excited here. And we have closed session to read out, so we have three items, and at this time, I'm going to turn it over to the clerk.
Closed session item number 15, agenda number 15, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel, re-anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation. Item 16, pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with county-designated labor negotiators Judy Hawkins and Nick Marvin regarding the following employee organization, Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association, CCPSEA. Item 17, pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with county-designated labor negotiators Krista Amada, Judy Hawkins, Rob Vendorf, and Mary Egan regarding the following employee organizations, service employees international union SEIU Local 1021, sheriff's management unit SMU, Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association, CCPSEA, deputy sheriffs association DSA, Calaveras management union, Calaveras supervisors union, unrepresented employees.
With that, is there any public comment? Seeing none in the room, Stacy, is there any online?
There is no online public comment.
Okay. And with that, the board will convene into closed session. Thank you, everyone, and have a good day.